This conference will now be recorded.
Good morning, all. Good morning. Here with Coach Meeting Director.
Chair Marsh.
Here.
Vice Chair Carrie.
Here.
Member Henigan.
Here.
Member Kaczywski.
Here.
Alternate member Rick Sonnegan.
Here.
Um, let the record show member Hutchins is absent with notice.
Okay, please rise.
I'm sure we did. United States of America and to the Republic of America. My nation under an individual.
Okay, um, who started the public comment? Hearing that, we'll move on. You get a motion for approval of minutes? Everybody's fine with the minutes?
Approved to accept the minutes as per then a motion to approve. Anybody want a second?
Right here. I wasn't here. Okay, sorry. Okay. Approved.
Was there a vote?
It needs to be a vote.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
All those in favor?
All those five.
Hi.
Okay. Let me remind everybody that this is a quasi judicial hearing. Does any of the members of the commission have any expartee?
No.
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 No. Okay. It's, uh... Any, uh... Comment or is it?
I can swear in everybody that's ready to.
Yeah, anybody speaking on behalf of this?
With regards to the quasi judicial hearing for 113 Island Drive, if you're here to speak on that matter, would please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear up front to the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
When you come forward, please state your name and address clearly for the record and whether or not you've been sworn in, and please speak directly into the microphone. Thank you.
Okay, Stan.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner's Coria Warmentown Planner, this is reconsideration of the development plan reviewed for 113 Island Drive, which was deferred by planning at the October 25 meeting to address inconsistencies with site adjacent properties as well as some brand concerns on the rear of the property. So I... The, uh, the information in your packet indicates the changes that the applicant has made, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Tara is?
She might be running late.
Okay. Uh, any building department comments?
Hello, good morning, everybody. Durant, you have been official. Uh, with regards to, uh, the development plan submitted for 113 Island Drive, both the department has no objection to the plan has submitted. Once building permit plans have been submitted, uh, further review will be done for consistency with the bill of course. And.
The applicant present?
Morning, Carla.
Good morning.
State your name.
Delmar Benaventio. Uh, from BD Design Associates. This is, uh, 150 East Boca Raton Road, Boca Raton, Florida. So, uh, we are...
Your help, please.
Sure. Yeah. So I have here my civil engineer, uh, which I think most of the concerns were with him. Whether I can ask, if we can answer any questions you guys would like.
Okay. Commission, I unfortunately I was not here for this presentation, so I know there was some...
You guys also before your civil, when you just introduced the project a little bit, once again, you know, the architectural features and site plans and so forth, with the board one more time?
Sure. Yeah, so, uh, this is...
Sorry, a little.
Sorry. So, uh, this is a custom home. This custom home was, um, designed for a single-family residential. It's in a very tricky lot, the lattice triangle, uh, and it's at the end of a canal. The features of this lot, as you can see, I don't know if it's made available to you, you can see on the board, um, is, is to have a transitional modern farmhouse look, um, to stay, um, within, within the design of, of the settlement area, with just a different style. If you notice on landscape with the lines, just to try to stay with very, um, colors and materials that are in harmony. And it's, it was, uh, basically the lot was a challenge. We were able to come up with a, with a solution for this lot. Well, pretty much, pretty much the, the plans keep themselves. We have, uh, the clients are super excited and, and, uh, we're here to... Don't say any question you guys would like. Please.
You know, we saw this in October. Uh, I'd like you to walk through and show us the changes you've made since the October plan, so that we, we have an understanding from a site planning civil side, uh, how the questions we had were addressed.
Sure.
My name is Carlos Peralta.
Really didn't hear you at all.
My name is Carlos Peralta from BD Design.
Move the mic a little bit closer.
My name is Carlos Peralta from BD Design. Well, the main changes we did, uh, in the back, uh, you were concerned with the, with the height of the pool, respect of the, um, the level of the, of the water. So, uh, we, we made, um, steps to, to reach that level, uh, in a sequence, not abruptly.
I think the concern was that it was a very abrupt wall. So we stepped, stepped the hardscape in the pool area to be able to accommodate that, as you can see in the images.
Is there a larger image of that part?
See that, that rear area, aerial there? Exactly. That was one way for us to, to bring the house and accentuate it to the actual pool. Because as you're noticing back then, your concern was it was just a wall. And, and this was our solution to it, which actually made the project nicer. It's always a silver lining when it comes to this, this, this elements.
And on the sidewall we're seeing there with the fence that towards the neighbor, has the height of that retaining wall been changed?
Yes, uh, you were concerned also about the height of the retaining wall. So we lowered the retaining wall to seven, seven six max and then going down to the, the level of the...
Yeah, so the, so the whole idea is, and that's why we have a civil engineer, is to keep the water, retain the water on site. And at the same time, those, you know, the whole site has been brought up to the, to the, to the flood level that is needed. And at the same time, all the water issues when it comes to, uh, we understand the worry was if you have a, uh, a water surge coming in, that the wall was gonna act as a... In this question, the water to the neighbors, this would be more like centuated. I mean, if everything gets flooded, then everyone is flooded. But at least this helps that those waves, uh, to dissipate.
Is the seawall being raised, or is that the same height that's the current seawall? It's the current seawall?
Yes.
The same, same, same height as the neighbor seawall?
Yeah.
It's right.
And how about from the neighbor's side? If you recall, the neighbor on the side was concerned, uh, how it would appear from his side. How high is that retaining wall from the elevation of the neighbor's backyard? On the other, on the other side, yeah?
Same, same, same thing. I mean, you, you can see on the elevation, it's, it's pretty much, I mean, we, we, we can either go higher or lower. Then we're maintaining the, the flood criteria. So we raise the house according to how...
So, so in feet, how, how high is it? If I'm in the neighbor's backyard, how, how high is that retaining wall?
It's seven six, yeah. The, the height of the, the wall, the neighbor is, uh...
This one.
It's, it's here inside.
You got a similar elevation. Yeah, there's a spot on the vision on the... Yeah, that is in the, in the elevation.
Six, yeah.
Six point two. Six point two, I think we do is here in the neighborhood. And now it's a six point five, so.
Six and a half feet? Okay. Along this wall we're...
Yeah.
Okay. And your, your show, the elevation, the drawing that you showed doesn't show, uh, much landscape. So is the intention to have that see-through fence there, or to put a landscape, uh, uh, you know, what's, what's the landscape plan along that, uh, on the property line? I think...
Do you have the landscape plan?
Yeah. You guys didn't, you guys acted and print it out on their plan, but I have to print it out manually, but yeah.
The old one doesn't show it.
Was the landscape plan updated, or to, to match the contours?
We didn't have the comments of the landscape before.
Okay. No, no, it didn't, didn't change because we didn't have any comments on that.
So what, what's the intention along the top of that wall? Is it, is it gonna be a hedge, or is it? It shows nothing there, does that mean it's gonna be nothing?
No, I'm, I'm pretty sure this is gonna be... Okay, sorry. Of course.
Hold on, then with the wrong fence all around.
Yeah, unfortunately, the, the landscape architect could not be here. She's, uh, couldn't make it for health issues, but, uh, yes, definitely for sure, we need to add, you know, good landscape. I'm pretty sure any owner who comes in and buys his property is gonna have, if anyone, landscape.
And the other, so there were two main questions we had to turn in October, if you recall. It was the, this, which you, uh, made a change to address, and then it was the drainage. And, uh, can the civil engineer tell us about this?
Yeah, I mean, we are, uh, maybe Tara has some specific questions, but, you know, providing yard drains on both sides of the property.
You're, you're looking at a plan we're not looking at.
Oh, sorry.
Look at the same thing.
Yeah, so we're, sorry, first off, this is Zachary Todd with H S Q, 1001 Yamato Red Boca Raton, civil engineer on the project. We are, and we made some updates due to the septic system, um, shifting the yard drainage system to collect water on both sides, run underground exfiltration trench, um, to a trench drain and essentially outfall per the town's typical section, um, and keep the existing swale in the driveway, which is what I believe all the adjacent properties do. So that's what we're doing, we're collecting water. There is some, you know, tricky spots on that, you know, rear end where we have the step down, where it's just a, a lower elevation. I mean, the only, the only way to, uh, essentially collect water there would be to provide a pump of some sort, just because it is so much slower than the house due to the raised elevation.
So where's the water gonna go there?
Can I just, I think, member of... I'm the...
Oh, sorry.
I apologize, I am having extreme back issues, and I thought I could get through this, but I can't sit. So Carla says we have a court, and we have an alternate that can step. I apologize for the disruption.
No, sure. Yeah, better.
You know, better.
Thank you. Somebody has a TV show moving on.
Come on, it's your turn.
I knew it was gonna get strange, boy.
Roger was here for the original.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I'm sorry, what, what was the...
Yeah, you'd said it would be hard to deal with unless you had a pump.
There's a small portion of, there's a small portion of that back here that's, I mean, we can't, in the fact that we don't have the ability to provide this is so tight drainage.
So, so where, where's the water going? And you say you're not providing for the drainage, is it spilling into their coastal? What's, what's going on with the water?
It's, yeah, I mean, most of it, probably some of it would flow in, some of it would soak in the, uh, the soil. You know, the pervert rate's pretty good here, but there is a small section. If we need to collect water all along the stairs, we'd have to provide a, a pump of some sort and find a way for that.
Well, I think we'll ask the town engineer to, to address that with you. We just wanted to under, understand. If she's satisfied, we're satisfied. So that's, that's the key here, but you may get more questions even following this meeting about that.
Understood.
Following up, I, I noticed quite a difference between the applicant and the zoning impervious versus pervious calculations. It's those two lines toward the bottom. The applicant has impervious at fifty-two percent, and the zoning has fifty-nine percent. There's a thousand square foot difference, and of course, reverses is on the pervious. Maybe you could comment on what the differences are and whether it matters?
Yeah, that, that has been addressed. We, we had meetings with, uh, with the city, and we addressed those calculations.
Why, I think, uh, this is occurring, not creation.
Yeah, I think it was just in the calculation of how Manny does his calculations, which sometimes not the same the way that they do it, but they do meet co because it's thirty something percent, so they are above that, so they're okay.
Yeah.
So they, they do meet, um, all these zoning, all the calculations are under...
It's thirty-four to four. Even the zoning official says forty-four percent versus the fifty-two percent. So forty-four is, that is acceptable, is that correct, Carla? Okay. I was just curious whether there was some change in the amount of, um, hardscape that the mayor...
What I'd like to suggest, Tara, um, can you come up and, because I'm reading your, uh, response here, and I see some deficiencies or potential deficiencies to this, uh, discussion on drainage.
You said the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Uh, hello, Tara Bamber, town engineer. Just getting to my comments. Okay. What was your question?
Well, in your comments, you have provide method of preventing flow from impacting adjacent properties and holding first inch of runoff.
So, yeah, um, this is a general comment, and I understand that they're having trouble with getting down to the seawall. My recommendation would be in the area that you have that four. Yeah, the, there's like those little walls. Yeah, the wall on the actual property that's at four, in that area, in that green space, I would ask to add a drain and then connect it to the system. And then the little deck at two, honestly, there's not much you can do about that, but it's not that much area. So if you at least catch the pervious area that's at four, and then what's trickling down, that should be sufficient.
All right. But it seems to be, so, that's the rest of the commission disagrees. I unfortunately wasn't present, so I missed the, the discussion. Drainage is an important thing here. This is a height lot, gonna have impact on adjacent properties if it's not done correctly. Kind of the newcomer to the, the application, it seems like there's still some old, you know, calculations that you're looking for, or concerns that you need some assurance that they will be addressed.
Um... Yeah, so...
Because it, just while you're saying that, first of all, somebody else mentioned that drainage was quite a major discussion and issue. I'm not convinced that it's still resolved, because there's data that you're looking for that still hasn't been provided.
The data I'm looking for, are you referring to number two in my comments?
Yeah, I mean, well, one and two, I, I still, they, they tied it together. I'm just looking at, I, I wanna make sure that you were comfortable.
Yeah, so what Zach was saying about a pump, that really refers to that bottom deck area.
Right.
Because the exfiltration, to get into drainage, exfiltration trenches, the top of the trench, you can't go below that in your system, or it's not gonna, the trench means greatest capacity. So going down to two point eight, like, yeah, maybe you'll need a pump, but if you just look at that small area, I wouldn't find that, um, to be enough to ask for a pump. Like, we don't have pumps in the town.
So small.
It's small.
Area.
And then, you know, Zach's new to the town, so there are some areas, like between the driveways, that I would show as swale and connected to the system. There, yeah, there are areas that I'm gonna discuss with them during building permit. But I think overall, um, it, it's pretty close to the type of, of plans that we receive on other projects.
I guess the question, will this be approved if it's approved with condition?
Yes.
How we're gonna, sure.
These are, like...
Yeah, I know they are. Again, there is enough concern here, um, you know, because of the uniqueness of the shape and...
Significant concern the first time. Like, quite a lot's been done here to mitigate it, but I don't know if it's resolved.
Well, that's my question. It's, uh, late to the game here, so.
Yeah. It's a long way from what we're supposed to.
It, it's improved. We're still concerned, I think I am, the, the amount of, uh, of building and hardscapes that are on, uh, on this unusual lot, um, and the potential impact on the street. And I think we're gonna have to rely on Tara that, uh, to, uh, to, to make sure that doesn't happen in this, and as it is designed.
I sent pictures to the town, I live on the street, of a storm just recently, where the street is starting to flood, and that's with your lot being a hundred percent impervious.
Pervious.
Excuse me, pervious now. And it's, the street is not handling the water, whether the water is yours or somebody else's, but for you to add to that is not good for the street.
One of the things we talked about last time was, uh, whether the driveway in the front would be completely hard, or whether it would have some pervious element to it. Comment, like I think you have laid out in section C, maybe if that's, I think, spacious between the, the payers, or is this a just more or less poured concrete? I, I'm just trying to mention what the grid work is meant to...
The material of the driveway?
Yeah, no, it's not, it's, it's...
You guys, you guys grid work show.
Yeah, so...
Go on, behind the grid.
Between the grid is, is, uh, grass.
Okay, that's, yeah, so that I think...
Real grass or?
Uh, it's synthetic grass, probably synthetic dirt, it's just for, for the water to be...
And could that be, could that be done with gravel so that it, it does drain?
Well, it's, it's, it's grass synthetic.
Synthetic for drain, which is gravel.
It, it will drain.
Same, same.
It would be the same thing. So what, what I'm, what I'm hearing is that, uh, we did pass the pervious in the, in the, in the pervious area, and I think the, the town engineer, she said we have met most, you know, she would, once they go into the, the building comment, she would deal with, and she will address the little things that are left, but it's, it's, it's such, such small areas because of the uniqueness of the lot, but, uh, we're pretty sure between both, they will address any of the drainage issues that we have left.
Right, so, uh, this is just a question, my reading the, uh, the symbolism on the plan. You've got this little red scallop area on the side that extends past the property line. Is that just to send you to the...
That, that's just a section line.
That just tells you it's for the map on the page. So actually, nothing that you're building extends on.
It's just an symbol.
I thought that's what it meant, but I...
Okay.
I'd like to address a comment that Rick made. On A202.1, it shows the side view looking, I would think it would be, what would be south, north side of the house looking south, that there is a fence running along the top of that entire wall. And are you talking now additionally of a hedge? Is that what I'm hearing you saying, that it's gonna have a fence and a hedge? Is that correct?
Yes, it is correct, yeah.
Okay, and, and the hedge will be on the inside of the fence?
Inside.
Okay.
Yeah, inside of property line.
Okay.
Is it my turn to make some comments, or? I didn't want to, perking on the landscaping, because again, not through here. That's where I was talking to. I just can't see that this didn't meet a reasonable landscape plan. Is it, you, the landscape architect obviously isn't here.
Yeah, she, she...
I mean, just this illustration, look at that bottom rendering there. And, and it's supported by what you show in your, the, the L1 plan. There is absolutely no screening, no respect for the neighbor to the south. The ceiling is abnormally high anyway for this size lot.
So on, on, on our renderings, we just wanted to depict not the actual true landscaping. No, no, I'm, I'm just saying on the renderings, you wanted to show because of the drainage issues, we want to show the walls and how all that is seen instead of covering it. But I know that in the landscape plan, she's missing the edges, and she should have...
There's a huge deficiency in the landscape.
Correct.
You know, you gotta mitigate some of the impact that your, this building's gonna have on the neighbor. And the, the major neighbors.
Can you look at SP103? It's more of a photo.
Here's the...
Different beginning. It's not open?
Should be just before where she has them.
This one, SP102?
103.
Fourth one in our sheet count. There you go.
Yeah. Okay, yes, uh, so the, on the left-hand side of the three, the middle, the middle photograph shows the condition prior to, uh, whatever you did and what you would probably be calling psych prep. But that lot was extremely well covered with mature sea grape trees that are all gone with, I don't think, any consideration of what could have stayed there, even with the house that you designed. But they're gone. So I, I'm gonna support Mark in saying what you're doing now is, is, it's, it's totally inadequate. You stripped the lot. In front of the house right now, there are, I don't know, six or seven large coconut trees. There's, uh, a mature gumbo limbo. a mature gumbo limbo, there's fairly substantial size, I don't know what type of palm it is, and on the corner of the lot. What, what are you gonna do with those trees? Are you going to move them into the lot? Are you gonna continue cutting those down?
Well, I, I, we haven't cut anything down, you know, we are, we are the architectural firm, and they hired us to design this, this.
Somebody did.
So I, I know we have landscape plans, we have existing landscape plans, and and I know if there were any cutting of trees, it should be shown on the.
All the trees were removed on July 29, 2020. Were you the owner of the property there?
Hi, I'm here, Regina.
Give us where.
Yes.
I had sworn in.
Have you been sworn in?
No.
No, did you say it's the whole truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I did. I'm just here representing the builder, because he is actually out of town right now. So as for the sea grape trees, I don't know anything about that, but I will definitely reach out to him and ask him about that. I'm sure that our landscapers will be doing a complete new landscape plan as for what we have discussed about. The only thing is I could just say about his rendering, he's not showing the landscape, it's just he's showing the house. So you just tell me what you would like for the landscaper to show so I can make sure it's done.
Well, it's not really us to.
No, no, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think the landscape architect should reflect what.
I know, do you want it on his rendering, or you just want like a?
We want it on the plan.
Yes.
This landscaping plan, L1, is more of a civil plan than a landscape plan.
Okay.
It has maybe a half a dozen understorey plants.
And I just want to go over, so we talked about the sea grape trees, and then there's a gumbo limbo, and you said there's a palm tree there, and you want to know what's going on with that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, sir.
They're quite, one is five feet from the edge of the road, one is 10, one is 15.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay. Again, not being there, I think the terracing in the rear is, towards the water, is huge improvement, my only comment was, or concern, why is the pool still so high, because you're still getting, you know, you're fighting abnormal, abnormal height.
It's happening, it's happening all over, all over, in all the.
I'm saying the pool level and the patio level are one level instead of the step.
Yeah.
The pool as well and produce. Right.
Yeah, I think the pool is still at the same elevation, just slightly less than the, sorry?
Yeah.
And we had asked about that last time, and it's still way up in the air, and the neighbor here, we're here, he came in and asked, why is the pool so?
Well, the, you know, most of the pools, we are always usually six inches below the house floor. And it's just easier for any owner to be able to step out to the patio and access the pool.
This is unusual, sorry.
Yeah, exactly, and that's why, that's why the pool has that unusual shape, we curved it, brought it back more, and stepped it down so that it's not, you know, the design that we had, that was so much into the backyard, but it's taken back a little bit, so now it is inside their property. And, and this, if, if we were to lower the whole pool area, then they, I mean, they will have steps going into the pool, they will lose any of the, you know, they want to be able to have reviews as well. So, I mean, the stepping down, I think we addressed the issue of the step down, addressed the issue of the water. And the design came out beautiful because of that, and that's what I said, there's also silver lining when these parameters have to be met.
It's good to them. I thought I, my impression is that terracing was a main issue of the pool being high.
Yeah.
I think we have a giant issue of the pool being high just today. I suspect that they're gonna want to have some landscaping along the side of the pool that faces, alongside the pool that faces the neighbor toward the bottom of the pool, because they're gonna want some privacy too.
Exactly.
So I suspect that there won't be this view perching down, looking at the neighbor. I suspect that they're, that when you do the landscape plan, you can address that. But I do think you did a good job of doing the terrace and you addressed what I thought we told you was our biggest concern.
Yeah, I think my point, sorry, is that you're in a restricted area trying to go down quite a substantial mountain, the sooner you can start that stepping, it would make it a little bit less severe, this is a huge improvement over what was previously. Anyway.
I have a question for Tara. Tara, on sheet PD1, when looking at the front of the property in the swale area where the driveways are in the swale, in the front of the property, where is the swale going to drain? Is it attached somewhere on that street to a drain system somewhere where it's going to drain, or is it just going to sit there?
Well, generally, the driveways in the swale slopes to the existing grade, so.
I'm asking.
Right, again, I don't know if there is an inlet anywhere there.
Okay, so I think that needs to be addressed.
I think the island has road drainage, I just have to look at our plan.
Okay, so I think that needs to be addressed because we had a recent project that was completed.
Yeah.
The water is sitting in the driveway so much that the person cannot get into their home because the water is so deep in the driveway, number one.
Right.
Number two, it's impacting the neighbors, and it's impacting them actually, they can't even get out there properly because the water is so deep there. But we need to figure a way to get that water out of the swale once it's in there, so it doesn't sit there for five days.
Right. I agree. I honestly think that's a town issue, not necessarily in this project, honestly.
Is there a way for them to address that, to get it out of?
I have to look at to see what the area, like where the drain, I know there's drainage on, on the drive, but I have to see where the inlets and everything are. We may be able to ask to slope, slope it, so it actually, like, sometimes it doesn't get the slope that it needs in the swales. But if we look to see where it, if it can go, you know, to the south or to the north, and if we have drainage in that area, we can ask them to make sure that they slope, we want to slope this way and this way, and maybe between the driveways. Like I said, I have to look to see what our plans are.
Let's talk, let's also, during building permit stage, talk about how they're going to get access their property in their driveway, maybe we can put a box in the bottom with a grate over top so that the water goes inside instead of sitting at the bottom of the driveway so that they can't get in.
Right, I know what you're talking, I know, yeah, I know which area you're talking about. Yeah, that might be something future that the town needs to ask so that the water goes.
I'd like to comment on a statement that's on most of our drawing that says that the pool is gonna be permitted later.
Yes.
But I think this pool, the surrounding area is so critical to this lot that if any changes are made from what's been presented here to that pool design or to the back of this house, it comes back to PNC. That it's not an administrative approval. I'm making that motion, do I have any support for that?
Yes.
You do have support for it, I just want to make sure that there's some system within the town that would find that. Or is it just come in for a full permit and not look back at what the approval that exists for this house? Ronnie, how's that work?
So we do have a system in place, one provisions, I mean, we generally review what the commission comments or any restrictions are with respect to any project that was approved by PNC.
What does the separate pool review look at?
Well, based on what Jim and Andy just mentioned, is we look for the dimensions, the step back, the grades of the pool to be consistent with what was approved at this meeting. And based on what he's saying, and if there is a motion that does, if there is a difference in that, then if we do get directives.
Are there safety reviews, like fencing with the children, I don't know what the code is.
Yes, there's, there's quite a few, but I believe what Jim and Andy are saying is the structure, the, the physical structure layout grades.
The terrace is there.
Which what is approved at this time. So, you know, we do get into more notes and boles, and we look at it more with a microscope, but in generally, I'm taking this to mean grades and setback.
Okay, any other comments from the commission?
So, so I make that a motion?
Before the motion.
Wait, wait, sorry.
Yeah, I think that we have to strongly encourage the landscaper to soften the sides of the house, they're very stark, they lack architectural structure, and it's, it looks like a, just a major white wall, and that can be done if you incorporate trees. Trees also are great drainage, well, for properties, for vehicles for drainage, so I think this property needs height to mitigate the height of the walls as well as the, sort of the wall-like sides that exists on the property, and be very conscious of native plants, the requirements for native plants and trees.
Anybody willing to?
Other comments?
I have another question for Tara, I'm sorry Tara, you're getting your exercise this morning. The system that seems to be handling the majority of the drainage, especially in the front, is two exfiltration trench areas, is that correct, one on the side and one near, near the septic field? And, and how, or excuse me, I think there's one under the driveway.
There is one under the driveway, okay.
And so my question, and I'm just not familiar with this, is, you know, what, what's involved in maintaining those? Are these things that, over the years, aren't as functional as they are when they're first put in? You know, what, what would happen is, obviously down the road, there's a homeowner here, he's not gonna be aware and the water's gonna end up in, in the streets. It is, or are they, do they have a long life?
You're right, they do over time get clogged, they can be cleaned out. But, yeah, over time they get clogged, I don't know the timeframe off my head.
You think it's five years, 25 years, is it, you know, what? Because we, as the town, that end up with the water in the street and trying to deal with that.
Right. I don't know, it, like, the more that they keep it, their system clean, like, the inlets try not to get leaves and everything in there, and then you see, like, clean outs, and like, those can be washed out, but yes, that would have to be the homeowner's responsibility, and they would have to know to do that.
And that, that's the key phrase right there, they'd have to know to do that.
Yeah.
You know.
And we can educate, we can just educate the homeowners.
How common is this exfiltration now in the town, and you've seen it on most plans?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, very common.
Okay, any public comments on this application during then?
So my pool name was a separate motion, it was not an overall agreement or disagreement with what's here. Can I, that on the table, please?
We have a motion that kind of incorporates, because I think landscaping, the permit should not be issued till we have approved landscaping. I think it needs to come back. Somebody is brave enough to make the motion.
Frank, I'm sorry, supportive of this intensity of development and design on the site, so I'm it's, I, I think it doesn't meet the criteria that we set out, that this board is to review. And, you know, I know they've addressed things that were discussed before, but it's, it's it's problematic, and I think we'll regret having approved this project if we do.
Sorry, Curly, good.
I was just trying to understand what you said, if you're looking to have, allow them to submit but won't get approved unless they come back, or I was just asking for clarification, but I think you guys are still working it out.
We're still working, I just wanted to make sure that that condition was part of whatever motion. Landscaping would have to come back to PNC.
Are you thinking of approving the project?
I'm not, I'm not suggesting, I'm just saying, it's, whatever the motion is, that it's approved or denied or deferred.
You could approve the, the house plans but ask for the landscaping to come back.
Yeah.
So that they could actually get started on something.
Yeah, yeah, allow them to submit but can't get a building permit approved until they come back with the landscaping or anything else you guys want to see.
Condition approved. So. Instead, I really wasn't part of the original presentation, so I'd rather fellow commissioner would, it's a wish, make a motion.
Yeah, I think that they, they did address the main issues that we told them about the last time. They've expressed their willingness to promptly write a landscaping plan that will address their concerns because they certainly heard all of them from the screaming, the monumental white walls by the pool. So their setbacks are acceptable, their impervious percentages are right, so I would move to accept this to move forward contingent on the landscaping plan approval. I think that's really all we have a right to ask for, well, I don't want to be that, I think that's what we certainly need to ask for and make sure to help the neighbors in that extent.
I think that, I think we need to constrain any changes to this.
Yes.
To the pool or the surrounding.
I heard, I heard Ronnie saying that he would enforce the pool dimensions.
I have a question, when you added the terracing for the pool, on the plans, it looks like you, there's more impervious areas, is that correct? Did that change the percentage, or is that, did that remain within the code?
It remains, sorry, it remains into the code, and it's more pervious than before because we set back the pool to let the terraces, which are grass, it's more planting areas, so there's more pervious to it. Because of the design, it got more green.
Right. I just, I wasn't sure, and it looked greater than one.
That's a very good point.
The presentation, greater than another.
Yes, it's a very good point.
Okay, Roger, I think you're making that as a motion.
Yes, sir.
We have, roll call, please.
Oh, we need a second.
A second, sorry. Trying to move this along.
I made a motion on the pool, still nothing's happened.
Well, hey, Roger, incorporate that.
Motion that the pool would, specifically, I feel, for much amounts.
And that it comes back if it changes?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay. I withdraw my motion.
Anybody second?
Second.
Second.
Would it favor?
Hi.
Hi.
May.
So it's 32.
It was 32, with Mark and Carrie.
Carrie. Okay, so just to clarify, the motion was to approve for them to be able to go before building permits to apply, however, cannot get approval into the landscape, comes back, and they cannot make any changes to the pool or the back of the property without coming back before PNC.
Yes, correct, right. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Maybe you want the first one? Okay, um. I think we're gonna move into just discussion. Items now, uh, item number three, retaining walls. Great to be, we have staff. Uh, Duran, if you wouldn't mind. Presentation.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Martin, uh, so. During. Uh, review of obligations of our own tone. Of existing projects and projects that uh, I was involved in issued permits. I've recognized that there is a. Conflict in our code with the illegal. So the first picture is showing. A wall that is consistent with tones and legal. The wall that we see. Uh, the low wall to the right is uh, just that thirty inches. And it's set back eighteen inches onto the property. And there is uh, plantings in front of that wall, the screen wall fifty percent. And this is actually a requirement of walls and fences and section sixty-four. Um, can we move to the next slide? So that's just uh, another one, and interestingly enough, there is no fence on top of that wall. If that wall significantly exceeds thirty inches, the building code requires that a safety barrier be put on top of it. So uh, just to, I mean, set up a scenario, if that wall was thirty-one inches tall. A fence would be required on top of that. So it, this is the front of the property. And we now have two foot six inches. You put a four foot wall on top of that, you have no exceeded tone code by two foot six inches. Because we consider that structure a wall. So the fence on top of the wall would accumulate it, counting from the lowest grade to the top of that structure. Let's look at another one. Oh, so that's our recent example of a completed wall, again, it was set back. Um, there are plantings in front, um, and the owner has put uh, some hedges on top, no fence was involved in this. Leave that is right at thirty inches again, which didn't require a fence on top of that wall. Next slide. Uh, just another example of someone using retaining walls, next slide. Okay, here we go. This wall was necessary to achieve the new FEMA grades. Uh. At the front, we have the retaining wall and on top of that retaining wall is a fence. This fence application actually came to me with the fence stopping attention to the barrage. If that happened, then you would have had a wall that exceeded thirty inches and a fall hazard. Uh, over that, that lot is significantly lower than uh, the, the grades, uh, the, the wall on the opposite side. Making uh, the need for that fence on top of that wall. So um, we could just scroll through the others, but I think I, I, I made a point about us not categorizing. Um, oh, this, this is an existing wall, uh, a few decades old. Um, it's five feet above grade and there is no. Fall barrier on top of that.
Other than the structure.
That is not a fall barrier.
But what is the grade behind the wall?
It's level.
Level with the top of the wall?
Yes. And uh, there is no fall protection.
So the structure is not considered fall protection.
Alright, so, okay, here's another one, this is significant. From grade to the bottom of that white wall is probably seven or eight feet tall. And then on top of that, we have a four foot fence. From grade to the top of that fence, we're probably looking at eight feet, obviously. That's a violation of our tone code. But to achieve the level that was necessary and the fall protection that is required. Somehow this was allowed in the past and approved. And um. That's the kind of thing that, you know, I'm looking at defining and possibly uh, hosts. Probably writing on ordinance or changing our fences to acknowledge the need for retaining walls and possibly. Uh, subtracting a retaining wall from a fence requirement. So retaining wall would be a safety structure and considers as such, and then the wall. Our fence could continue on top of that. So um, I, I drafted a small memo here and apologized, I realize now in my rush that uh, I stuck the wrong abbreviation here, I put abbreviation there. For retaining wall, but we understand the retaining wall to be a structure that's necessary for uh, holding uh, soil and creating grade. With one side being higher than the other. Uh, we had an application some time ago on a lot. That was barely uh, ten thousand uh, square feet and just making it. And because of the new requirements, especially for drain field. And we're gonna find that a lot more, right now, I believe that the health department requires that a. Um, a drainage for a septic system be at or above B F E. So in, in, in most cases, we have B F E being six, and even when uh, systems are being replaced, they have to be elevated. In a few months, we're gonna have that number being nine or ten feet, so we're gonna have a significant height at some front yards. And to deal with that slope and to also minimize the cost on the owner. Uh, my recommendation is that we allow for the use of up to. Um, thirty inches of a retaining uh, system. Um, we could use possibly, could you roll back like three slides, Carla? The retaining block system. Um, the stack of blocks, those uh, up to thirty inches. They do not require engineering beyond that they do. Uh, one of the reasoning is if that has to be put in, to allow the owner to install that system. To get the grades um, on the general plumbing permit perhaps, or have the owner do a O B. Instead of getting a structural engineer O B to install a system. And if they had a wall before, to be able to install a wall or fence on top of that structure. Without counting the structure itself at grade. Um, the bottom of the structure has grade, but be able to use the top of the structure as grade. And then on top of that, install your four foot or six foot fence, um, you know, for safety on top of that structure. So I'm open to questions, I uh, tried and it's a very uh, technical subject, but uh, you know.
And I just, um, I just. Want to add that you guys discussed this at a briefly, not necessarily all in detail. At your November eighteenth uh, meeting at the joint workshop, I attached the minutes for all you guys to see this, where you guys talked about a certain project. Um, and possibly needing tapering or terracing wa- on walls, um, and so forth, so this is where you guys will also have a discussion in regards to that. And what the building official is asking for as well.
I think we also, if I'm not confusing with another discussion. Uh, talked about having landscaping in front of such retaining walls to avoid the, the appearance issues. So that those retaining walls might have to be actually set back enough to allow for a landscaping to avoid having. Uh, adverse visual effect on the neighbor.
So that's actually the code as it currently stands.
For the retaining walls.
For, no, no, for a wall, there is no.
If we add, if we add what you're suggesting. I'm suggesting that the retaining walls be uh, set to allow enough room for visually, visual improvement.
I'm actually saying the opposite. I'm saying allow the retaining wall to sit at the property line, because in doing so. You're subtracting away from use of the land space for that property. That just may be the cost of, like, what's happened.
Honestly, this isn't very attractive right here, it needs some, it, it needs some landscaping in front of the wall we're looking at.
Right, so what we had, and this was a very difficult one, and this was a seventy-six beachway. If seventy-six beachway had to. Do that eighteen inches, it's a corner lot, so now you're subtracting one point five foot. Possibly a hundred feet around the property, it would mean that. That person would not be able to build because that area is not subtracted from the actual lot space, you know, for them to do that. And the requirement, again, I'm, I'm saying thirty inches just for us to consider it. But we are gonna need some type of terracing to be able to meet the new FEMA heights. And it is gonna take away from the property.
Chairman Mark?
The, the, the area of that property.
I'd like to propose from the, from the get-go, that we separate walls that are boundaries. That are privacy, that are visual, that are architectural, from walls that are needed to meet FEMA code. FEMA requirements, okay, to start with. I think the wall, the, we can easily. Write the code that up to six feet, whether including the fence or not, is the max height for architectural. For these sorts of conditions, we're trying, I, I think what you're constraining us more, to more than I would like. Is to a one wall solution for the slope requirements or the height raising requirements of the lot. I don't think that's the way the town should be going. Is it going to impact the house design? The answer is yes, it is, just like, just like raising it and stopping the height requirement. That changed the height of the houses. We, we probably should be looking at what's the maximum single stage height that we would allow. And what is the space between multiple stages to get to the height that we need? So that we're not trying to do a six foot lift on the damn property line. You know, maybe we need to have thirty inches max, eighteen inches out of grade, four foot between parallel walls. Landscape it appropriately and step it, step the grade up. And we can do that without a fence at all. You, you can, you can come up six, seven feet within the side, side of the house, never have a wall, never have a fence.
I think, go ahead, Richard. No, I think terracing is like the previous application, it does create that gradual elevation change.
Correct.
The trouble with that is that, as we see in a lot of the applications, especially the side yard is very, quite narrow. You know, we have fifteen feet to do all that. And it could eat up six or seven feet of that, just, you know, unusable. Space, I mean, it's attractive.
Well, you, you could still have five, five feet to put a sidewalk be- between the two, between the two landscaped walls.
Right.
To, to transit, wh- wh- what more does the town have to provide you, I mean?
And this is, this is a universal problem.
Exactly.
All the towns currently, it's a, it's a very open discussion that's going on, because. You know, people, as, as um, Duran he alluded to, there's a value on the land, usable land. There's visual impact to neighbors and the community.
But most cases in Ocean Ridge, we're not building on postage stamps, we're building on lots that are between ten and thirteen thousand square feet.
No, we're blessed with larger lots, I agree.
Exactly, so, so why does the accommodation always have to be, when you, you can't, you can't give up something for appearance? I, I just don't, don't get that at all.
I think the appearance also has to be defined by front, side and rear. You know, it has to be categorized, what you're allowed to do in each one of those exposures.
Don't disagree with that.
Um, I think you don't wanna create the, the um, one that is on Hudson, obviously, that one with the massive wall and then four foot. Fence is very offensive.
Right.
And that's what I, I, I think we're all in agreement to the.
But it's clear, it's clearly going to impact house design, but it's something that people are going to have to accept. It's part of the new, it's the new world with ra- raising the lots. I, I, I don't wanna see us get into zero lot lining, that we, we can, I, I can. Give accommodate that you can zero lot line your wall if it's at the public right of way where there's already a buffer. But to allow you to put a wall on your lot line to save you eighteen inches. That now your neighbor's gotta be coordinated with and approve every time you need to paint that wall or repair that wall or whatever? Why?
Chairman Martin. Good, so um, there are a couple things we have in place, the first being that we do have a process in place. Where the town manager is able to grant um, the approval for them to, like, hedges. Uh, I don't, it would no be in the right of way that would scream that wall, so that could be with the softening of that element. And the second point is um, obviously I'm in constant contact with the engineer department, ingenuity. And eventually, those areas will be raised and graded once streets are raised. So the, 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 the. There will be a time, you know, maybe a few years, maybe of the ten years, when that wall will be there, but eventually. It will be raised um, and covered up for the most part.
The same issue affects, you know, lots, you know, all new lots have to come up, so we're gonna get that sawtooth. Or that eventually, I won't hear, everyone will be on the same level, but. It's, it's, I, I think it needs more studying and I think it needs more studying with community way. Seems like I always give Corey homework, but I, I think we, we can't, it's a very complex situation. And it's a very controversial situation, you listen to any of the other communities, they're all facing the same thing. Um, I think what Duran is doing is give us a good illustration here, I think it was a good presentation. But I, I don't think we can come to one solution no more, it's my feeling.
Did I hear Duran say that we actually have explicit conflict in our code now that needs to be resolved somehow?
And the answer is yes, if we could go back to that slide where we showed that wall that was five feet tall. Uh, the old, well, that, that's one also, that maybe that one I didn't discuss that one, but right here, that, that's a necessity.
Yeah.
But we have that one, uh, keep, keep going, the one without the um.
The knowledge.
Yeah.
This one.
Keep going, okay, so there we are, so we now have a wall. Obviously, this was way before I was here. Um, and when that house was built, I would not have given a C O to this property. Without having a safety barrier on top of that wall, it is a fall hazard. Now they understand it, that's been in the code forever, so. If we had put a three foot fence on top of that wall, which is the minimum. What we have in the front of the property is a wall that is eight foot high. And what the code uh, defines as a. And what the code, uh, defines as a frontage, uh, wall would be four foot. So we would now have a structure exceeding the code by four feet. As I understand it, this property owner is actually in the process of submitting for repair of that wall in the front. And unfortunately, once it's done, I will have to require a fence on top of that wall. So I'm being put in a headlock because I'm requiring something that the code restricts.
Durani, is the picture we're looking at, is that wall height currently allowed under our code?
Five feet in the front? Answer is no.
Three, thirty inches is the current code?
Uh, a maximum, uh, wall in the front of a property is four foot high.
Four foot?
Yes. And if it is, um, visible and adjacent to a street, it has to be screened and set back eight.
I, I have to agree with Mark's comments. This is complicated. I think you have to treat the beach elevation differently. And, uh, the front elevation is what gives me the greatest concern, and I want to make sure that uh, that we don't have this kind of look on the front elevations. And Neil's suggestion of terracing is a good one. Side elevations are, also, as Mark pointed out, the irony of, of these retaining walls and the side elevations is eventually they're gonna be unnecessary when the next house gets built and brings their earth up to that height. It's just, uh, a horrible waste of money, but a necessity because of time.
But what, what do we do now with the catch twenty-two that Durani has presented? They, they have to put a wall for sa- uh, fence for safety, but we can't allow them to put a fence because the total height, doesn't the town have to take an official position? Similar to Durani's that in such circumstances, the effective fence not be counted as part of the overall height? Otherwise, I don't think, I think he's telling us, he, that the owner is damned if he does and damned if he doesn't.
I think we also, sorry, Roger, I mean, we, we use fence and wall as the same. Is there no way to define, under our code, that both the same, am I correct?
That is correct. So that is what I'm. Finding retaining wall and address that separately from a wall uh, as a safety structure or, you know, a, a, a requisite structure and not have it be like a fence, you know, as decorated by something else, but, you know, it is necessary for great alteration and ought not to be considered a fence.
Well, you know, the other, in, in East Hampton, one of the things that they do with swimming pools, when they have a safety issue, they'll use a hedge, and then through the hedge, there will run parallel wires that you actually can't see. So a child can't go through that using or the wire match that the, the trees grow through. And that way, you don't visually have the ugliness of the fence, but you still have the pool safety, which I think is akin to the fall safety issue. So there are workarounds that are more attractive than just a wall.
Yeah, we, we do that often here with just chain link, and then we plant on both sides.
Yeah, right, it's a chain link thing from both sides.
We call it a living hedge.
Okay.
A living fence. But I, I think, I think it just needs, before we launch ourselves into something that we don't know what the true consequences will be. I think we, we need to do a little bit more research because there, there are people ahead of us up there. I know Palm Beach is discussing this in great debt. Um, they have similar problems. In most cases, their lots are smaller than ours. So it's a good blueprint to look at, see how they're doing, and it's very controversial. I think your illustrations are very good, and it definitely sheds light on the two issues. Retaining and fencing, or safety barriers.
So Chair Marsh, um, two things. I don't know if you want to open it to public comment just to see if they have any.
Yes, I was gonna do.
And then I just asked them for clarification. Are you looking for clarification for Corey to do more research in other similar towns to see what the code is currently, or?
Well, I think it would be a huge advantage for us to be more aware of what's going on, especially in the Barry Island communities. Um, I'm not trying to make Corey work, but I think it's, unless we have some data to look at, refer to, I think we, we're getting a little bit deep into this without. Oh, yes, the answer is, if you could do quick study, that'd be very helpful. Anybody from the public like to? It's okay, you weren't, you weren't gonna be asked if. We'll catch us later down the trail, all right? Okay, hearing that, um, we'll move on to item number four. Uh, which is, again, another easy architectural criteria for front elevation and more. I will open this up. I think most people here know my feeling about this, but I'd love to hear from the commissioners as to their feeling. And I know, Neil, you, you threw the, don't sit down.
Yeah, I mean, I, I've heard it, different pieces of this from, uh, different members here over different houses, and I think we just have to address the elephant, just like some of these other issues. You know, do we want to just, uh, take the criteria that we have now for the front elevation and say that pertains to all the walls of the building, or do we want to address ideas of minimum and maximum penetration, or how, how does anyone else see a need or a solution?
Well, I'll, I'll comment. I think, uh, both the commissioner and my reps are. Brett, Brett and I looked at the photos of the one thirteen and saw the two massive.
White walls.
White, white walls, and, uh, if, if we have the power to build into our norms that they be softened, either architecturally or through landscaping, that would give guidance to people who come before us, so they don't get surprised and spend their process. Because I think we're always going to want to help the neighbors by softening such an elevation.
Right.
Yeah, I think, sorry, you know, I've been, as I said, preaching, pushing. Where I come from, and I'm Marshall, and obviously, I think there are four sides to a building. They can't just ignore. I think what we're seeing here is a carryover from development, primary development projects, which are building in zero lotlines. And, you know, promoting just front and back aspects of the building, and I think it's, it's really becoming obvious that people are ignoring the secondary sides of the building. And, you know, I've, I've been preaching this, and I know I'm eating a drum, but I think it seems to be getting traction. I mean, this, even this last, uh, applicant or, you know, the submitted with that this morning, I mean, there is no real consistent architectural style. Um, I brought this up from what was, I think, twenty-one Ocean Avenue. That was gonna put a complete stark face, so that everybody approaching Ocean Ridge would have seen this big black wall.
Yeah. Place that needed the tobacco billboards.
So it's, I think, I would definitely encourage the commission and its town to focus more on four sides of the building. And it's, again, I, I talk about it more in scale, vertical scale, and it's getting worse with the elevation issue of FEMA. So I think of the, it would be a really wonderful thing if we could.
I, I think it's especially important. At, at one time, Ocean Ridge was a town of one-story ranch homes. Uh, and the side elevation of a one-story is much different than the side elevation of a thirty-foot to thirty-five-foot two-story, or I think it's twenty-nine, twenty-eight or twenty-nine on a flat-roofed building now. And that can really tower over a neighbor's property. And I second exactly what Mark had said. We, we need to look at all four sides of the building, and, uh, right now, it's the front and the back that we, uh, is being emphasized in these drawings. Uh, and, uh, there's been only a few cases. There was a corner one that we approved here in the last year that had beautiful side elevations, but that was a rare exception. Um, and, uh, we, we need to, uh, we need to incorporate it into code, so they don't come in here. And then we're making those comments appearing. That's, that's way too late. It needs to be in their design before it shows up before us, so that we look at it and say, nice job.
Right, right. And, and we are charged with that obligation for that, you know, to point that out to applicants. And it, it may take some training, and it's gonna be an arched discussion back and forth, I'm sure.
So the solid wall articulation currently calls for eight-by-sixteen new wall panel?
Yeah.
Should we apply that to the, like I said, to all, all the sides, or, or do we go to, you know, something else, ten-by-sixteen or something that it, it doesn't have to be quite as complicated as the front or the back, but, but it's still going to avoid what we saw this morning, that we really didn't have any grounds to, you know, make other than this subjective comment.
Yeah, but it's, we're charged with the aesthetic. You know.
Correct.
Personally, what's presented to us, and I think, you know, we, we need to keep some of that in, just as a reference point, but I think we all have, you know, I think a similar desire to see.
But how do we codify it?
I'm not sure. Again, I, I'm on both sides of this fence. You know, I'm always presenting. Um, I think it's just good practice. You know, and, and I, I sound outrageous, but instead of developers um, dictating what a building should like, look like, I think the design professional should be standing up and saying, look.
Right, but how do we say no to what was built on?
Well, we can make recommendations.
Well, I think it needs to be addressed in the code, like Neil said. The discussion at the joint workshop with the town commission is to have the Plamenon Zoning Commission come up with something for our amendment. Because you don't want it to be subjective.
Well, I think, I think simple things like a repeat, the treatments around all sides. You know, don't just have primary faces and secondary, tertiary faces, you know, that, there's a blend of design features that are, help me out here, get me out of trouble, please.
It, what my suggestion would be is, you know, in sixty-five-six of the code, you have your development plan review um, section, and it talks about the criteria that you look at, which is somewhat subjective. But I think that gives you the grounds for when you could say, hey, this side is gonna be plainly seen, and it needs more features to it. Perhaps one way to address this without getting into too much detail would be to make it clear in your government plan review that this board looks at all four sides of the building. And while you have specific criteria for the front, the front perhaps should be a guideline to all sides of the buildings, so that it's clear when a plan review comes before you, you're going to look at all four sides. These are the requirements for the front. This should be used as a guideline for all three sides.
But that doesn't let me say no.
Well, that's why I'm saying section sixty-four dash one E probably needs to be addressed, because it's stating in there that can just.
One thing too, and I think I talked briefly with, so the official guy about this, in the cases where you have a house that's in a corner lot or so forth, they can choose which one is their front and which one is their side at any point, and sometimes their front might be their side. So, and that happens in some cases, so they might not even put a lot of things on, they might put some things on their front, but not their side, even though that's where their front actually is.
Right, so sixty-four dash one E probably needs to be strengthened a little bit or changed to add not just the front, but.
Well, that's what I meant.
All the sides.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good point. I mean, if we, for dictating that's front, then we're asking for what we're getting.
I think it's important that it comes to us already how we're looking for it, i- i- to the extent possible.
Yeah.
And we want, we want to streamline, we want it to be one time, one-and-done hearings whenever possible. Um, you know, I, I felt badly for these folks today, that it went from October to January before they got their rehearing, and that's a delay in a project, and there's a cost.
That's what we don't want.
And, and the other part about today's is, I, I felt strongly, as Brett did, that the side elevations were awful. But there were so many things. Once you get overloaded, you can only kind of address so many issues when we're here.
And they didn't bring a length to it personally.
Right, and, yeah. Okay, so.
And they were asked to.
And they were asked to.
So, so it's, it would be much better if this thing got, came to us with the best efforts and that we, you know, weren't picking at their side elevations at this hearing, that, that, uh, that we had code guidelines and staff that said, hey, look, you gotta address this stuff, and telling them that before it comes to us. Thank you. Well, I'll just propose that we change it, that it's all four sides, this criteria.
Yeah.
I've been preaching that, so. Yeah, so we'll clarify that for.
Yeah, that's the drawing in sixty-four one, and, yeah.
Is there a session?
I did a second one.
So Chairman Mark, I, I, I hope this is, doesn't seem too trivial, but, um, three of the four drawings, I believe, because they're dark, they're not very clear. If we're gonna touch this, could we probably revise all the drawings to make sure that they look like the lower one? Where they're clear.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, good, good point.
So we have a set of, a motion by a member Henigan, supposed to have the coast change to, um, state that all sides need to, um, meet the criteria in sixty-four dash one. The pictures, is there, and there was a second by alternate member Brenner. Is there a vote?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. And one additional comment, one additional issue. The, these houses that have the, uh, the courtyard's and the gated walls with apartments or whatever they are, and what are we calling those? What was, just like down here on the, uh, estate lots usually? That, that, that those walls are also included, because you have to cap, we have to capture what's down the street. So it's not just four sides of your one building. If you've got more than one building on your property, that it's got. So that might be some more verbiage change.
Those primary structures.
And secondary.
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah.
So are we gonna amend a motion to include all structures, including accessories, are now applicable to the standard, or is it just the primary?
All structures.
Yeah, I suppose we can amend it to that.
Well, the favorit.
Hi.
Hi.
Commissioner comment before we leave?
I, what's, um. Breezeway from Durani that we need to. Okay, um, Durani, you mind if I, I can go to you and just go through the breezeway definition that you've researched. definition that you've researched, or you and Corey? Or maybe Corey, if you feel more comfortable.
Yeah, Chairman, Corey of Florida Town Planner. This was a follow-up from one of the items a couple of weeks ago. And I took a look at some of the definitions in town code for breezeway and and crawl spaces and breezeways and so forth. They what I found in the code is although there are some defined terms, some are not defined. And this was specifically regarding the home that has a sort of a vacant space, a ground floor space that's below the first habitable structure, first habitable story, if you will. The, the issue truthfully from the bottom line perspective is that I think the town code, much like one of the members commented on earlier, is really oriented to the original construction in the community, which was single-story ranch-style homes. Doesn't provide a language or envision the type of construction that you're getting currently or starting to get. Where you have the first habitable story elevated above grade. So if, understanding that that's something that is going to happen, has happened, and it will continue to happen more in the future. The suggestion that, that was made was that there may need to be some amendments to the code to better reflect that situation. And there, although, for instance, the code defines basement. I'm not sure there really are any basements necessarily. But there, there are and will be more situations where you have that ground floor space elevated with parking on the ground level. No habitable space, but the first habitable floor above that ground floor space.
Corey, am I understanding that in essence, if you called it that, you can create a building that has an elevation, it looks like a three-story?
Yes.
And I think that's something we really would like to avoid.
Well, it depends on the terrain, you know. That one we saw in all oceans, 6107.
Yeah.
Yeah, there certainly are height issues. There's no doubt. And maybe it's related to the terrain or not sure that there are any properties that are in the velocity zone. But where you do have that situation, it may necessitate the type of construction that you saw on that one home. We can take a look at it and come back to you if you like to see what where we might encounter that and at least try to address the issue so that it doesn't present itself in the future without being prepared for it.
Yeah, I think, sorry, I'm gonna ask just a simple question is could this situation only come up in RSE versus RSF? Because of the geography of the town? Or does this issue come if we just try to elevate the US style on other parts of the town?
Chairman Marsh, so the question first is there are areas mostly on Island Drive. There's a memo I'd sent to Ingenuity, I'll call it to you guys also. That the lots that identified on Island Drive. So based on the new FEMA study, the biggest change was actually the impact of elevated tide waters in the intercoastal. That seemed to have been something that had not been studied well in the past. And obviously FEMA is also concerned with insurance rates. So I suspect that over the years, they probably have had increased losses in these areas. So along the fingertips, along Island Drive, 121, I believe, like 119 Marlin, those lots, the ones on the front, Island Drive, the ones that are facing the park. All of those, I do believe, are now in a VE zone. And the elevation of the floor level, finished floor level is going to be 12 feet. They're currently at seven. So we're looking at at least five feet. And if it is a VE zone, they're not able to fill the lots. So that means that the natural elevation of the lots would have to remain as is. So we are going to see a response to these restrictions being he was staffed. Our codes actually do have some things in place about the coverage of these areas and that they did not be open to the front edge, I believe, and would have to put in breakaway walls. So it looks solid. There's an issue also of us restricting that area as habitable space. We do have them sign what's called a non-conversion agreement that is recording, recorded. But it still happens where people utilize the space. I do recommend that we consider limiting the heights of these areas to six foot six inches. Just because the minimum habitable roof height is seven foot. So if we did that, it would be very difficult to convert the space later on and use it. Also, if we could define what the floor is. One thing that I understand the community store south does is allow them only to place cavers on sand under these areas as opposed to putting in concrete. Of course, that would help with circulation and it would also further discourage the conversion of this space in the future.
Next, one clarification. Yeah, we don't want to see stilted houses. Durrani touched on it. You can fill in with frangible panels so that you don't get that void and, you know, oversized crawl space. So that's going to be coming in front of us, I'm sure, more and more. That VE zone, so. I don't think we want to see it in stilted houses. We can't.
And I, I think that by looking ahead, really need to plan ahead and really look at how we want to do it. And if we're looking at all four sides, the bottom is going to be one of the four sides. And by, you know, having that basement versus the hall space with openness makes a big difference. And I think we have to maybe put some architectural clarification and limitations depending. I know, maybe it will be a gradual change, but we don't want to have three-story buildings over town either.
We, we may need to redefine where we start our measuring of height. Because if we start it from the first floor finished elevation, then this whole section underneath is added height. And makes a towering property. And, you know, in a large lot like the one we reviewed on A1A. Okay, but on a, you know, neighborhood lot, not so much.
It's going to be just like the one on the Antropical Tropical Drive, the one on the ocean side. Where you had those panels. And, you know, that's what you're going to be looking at.
Yeah. I think that's why we tied max height though to a, an all measurable elevation rather than floor height.
Yeah, I think that may have some merit.
That was, that was part of that reasoning.
Okay, I think. Yeah, one of the other things that Corey came up with is, you know, the 6107 was presented as it's a breezeway space. And breezeway by definition, that's not a breeze. I brought it up in the meeting. A breezeway is simple covered structure that connects two buildings that are fully open sides. So I think those are the kinds of things we have to look at the definitions. So, all right, thank you, Corey. And anybody have any questions or comments? Yeah, the comments from the commission or anything?
Given the hour, yeah, given, given the hour, I will, you can comment till next time.
Yeah.
Talking about front elevations, Carolyn Cassidy said. 6273 North Ocean that I saw, a monstrosity that we look at every day. I'm sure you weren't the planning and zoning that approved the original plans, but what is supposed to happen in a case like that where they had a plan approved and they've just, they've never, to my knowledge, gotten a variance or anything. There's no fenestration in the front. I know that their building permits due to expire on, sorry, February 9th. What's going to happen? And what, what control do you have when someone just does whatever they want on a construction site?
That's what.
We've watched these for six years now.
It's, that house and a couple others actually started the creation of this commission.
Yeah, so that was before them. So that's why, even if it changes, they don't have any jurisdiction at this time because it didn't go.
It's one of the reasons why these things started.
Looking at it every day, so.
Yeah.
It's, it's meant to be heavily landscaped, correct?
How do they have no, no windows in the front? I mean, it just.
It's, it's, I won't say anything. I'll get myself. Tracy will be shooting you in.
Thank you.
Yeah, just that, no, it's, it was before this commission was formed, unfortunately. Okay, anybody wish to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
No, we need to.
Oh, we got to meet it.
Oh, yeah.
Another commission.
It will be quick.
Yeah, this is our excerpus.
Yeah, the infrastructure cert pack, citizen site committee. There's been a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes first.
Do I have a motion? So moved. All in favor? All right. Try and make, help me here, Tracy.
Yeah, we'll be very brief.
Yeah, this is basically our commitment to.
Yeah, based on county ordinance, the Surtex committee has to meet once a year to approve a report to submit to the town commission. The alternates also serve on this committee. You're also, you're seated anyway, so let's go. Our current revenue and expenditures in our Surtex fund are the revenue is $615,290.40 and we have made zero expenditures since the creation of this fund in FY17. Currently, the town commission has decided that the total money in this fund is restricted reserve for future septic to sewer conversion. So basically, all we need for this committee to do is to accept the report that was submitted with the amount of money that's in there now. And approve that to go to the town commission.
So we're not necessarily approving that all earmarked originally for sewer conversion.
Right, because the town commission has already made that decision.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Tracy.
Catch you on the way out. Thank you, Mark. Thanks for your time.
Roger, thanks. Thank you, gentlemen.